Let me say good evening to all of us on tonight. We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority for January 23, 2023. I will ask that you join us for the invocation by trustee Alex Reynolds, followed by the flag salute. Let us stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please forgive us of our sins, those which we've knowingly committed and those which we have committed without knowledge. Father, please bless these actions tonight and help us through the city's bidding. Watch over and guide us. Please bless our citizens as we move forward in this new year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Here.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of December 12, 2022, or take other necessary action.
The minutes are in our packet on tonight, I believe. If there are any corrections that need to be made, we ask that they be made now. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion in a second on item number one. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending December 31, 2022, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, you have before you the claims for the MMA. Staff recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Miller? Correction or motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second on the claims. Further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, that was the final item for the MMA Authority Meeting. That meeting is adjourned. We will now turn to the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority Meeting for January 23, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of minutes of December 12, 2022, or take other necessary action.
The minutes are in our packet. Do we have any discussion or corrections to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
After looking at the agenda, if you look at item number four, it says no action received report from the Civic Center operation, but you said we tabled that item for today's date, but it wasn't on the agenda. How do we correct that?
All right, we have that correction to be notated by Counselor McGee. If that's everyone else's understanding, we'll amend the minutes as discussed.
So to clarify, I don't, I guess Counselor McGee, your question is why is that not an agenda item today?
Yes, it was tabled for today, but it's not an agenda item.
I think that is an oversight, and it can be addressed and placed on the next agenda, and we will work to make that happen. I mean, I think the minutes are correct that that happened. We just did not have an agenda item. So I don't know that there needs to be a change to the minutes. It's just calling to the attention that we need that agenda item on a future meeting. Is that clear?
Yep, I understand. Counselor McGee?
You want to move it to February? Is it too late to put it on the minutes now?
So it can't be put on the agenda for tonight?
Okay, we'll move it. I understand.
And we'll make a note to the file to be certain it happens. All right, roll call. Well, do we have a motion in a second on the minutes?
Yes, we have a motion in a second.
Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Thank you. Item number two.
Consider approval of all claims from Muskogee Redevelopment Authority from September 13, 2019, through December 2, 2022, or take other necessary action.
Claims are in our binder on tonight. Do we have any questions about the claims or motion to approve?
I do have a question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
May we recognize?
Yes.
We see that those minutes is for a year and three months. Could we do our best to make sure going forward that our minutes are, our claims are from month to month? And also, if we can get detail for some of the larger dollar amount that we do receive on these claims, I just think that it's very difficult to approve minutes for a year and three months.
Any other questions on that item?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion in a second on the claims. We'll make the note to the record to try to make a way to get these in better order. Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, thank you. Item number three.
Consider approval of all claims from Muskogee Redevelopment Authority from December 3, 2022, through January 13, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Those claims are in our packet on tonight. Do we have any discussion about those or a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be recognized on that one as well.
Yes, ma'am.
That is the same case as item number two, so if we can just do better there, I would appreciate it, sir.
Thank you. Duly noted. Do we have a motion in a second?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
To be clear, the MRA staff is not represented here tonight, but we do have, the reason that the claims are, you see here at one month worth of claims, is we are having monthly meetings of the MRA, and so they will be presented monthly. Our city staff does help the MRA prepare those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number four.
Review and make recommendation on the City of Muskogee's adoption of ordinance number 4183A of the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 74, Taxation, Article 8, Use Tax, Section 74-237, Economic Development Fund, by adding Section 74-237(c)(1)(D), providing for repeal or severability, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Garvin is going to present this item on tonight. Let me also remind us that in a previous meeting, he was asked to come back and make this presentation to firm up our recommendations, and that's what's being done tonight. Mr. Garvin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Authority, as the mayor said, last month, city council authorized me to amend the Economic Development Fund. Also, they asked me to look at a policy for sales tax rebate. First, I'm going to discuss the Economic Development Fund. Currently, within the Economic Development Fund, it was created to provide revenue for incentives to create new jobs, retain existing jobs, for high-impact businesses. Within that Economic Development Fund, there's an economic opportunity account. Currently, funds within the economic opportunity account can only be budgeted and expended for the development of a high-impact business project that creates new, high-skill, high-wage jobs, or for assisting in the development and/or redevelopment activities within a targeted area. An example of the targeted area would be the Urban Renewal Authority, or urban renewal area. It can also be used to assist in projects that due to the size of the project, it would have a significant impact on the City of Muskogee. So in order to assist with the development or redevelopment of locally-owned businesses, we are adding a new section to the Economic Development Fund ordinance. That section is Section 74-237(c)(1)(D), which it defines, first of all, it defines a locally-owned business. And the definition of a locally-owned business is a business that is located within the limits of the City of Muskogee, and said owner physically resides in and has an address within the 74401 or 74403 ZIP code. We had some couple of options to look at there. At one time, we talked about just doing it within the city limits. After going back and reviewing some of the previous ordinances that was passed, for example, when we talk about a local contractor, most of them use 74401 and 03 ZIP code. So therefore, I took the 74401 and 03 rather than just the city limits. It also added a section that says states funding for economic opportunity account may be budgeted or expended for locally-owned businesses that are either expanding their existing business, relocating an existing business, local person wanting to open up a new business, purchasing or replacing equipment, for example, a restaurant they want to go through and replace all their cooking equipment, installing or replacing infrastructure, or installing fire or sprinkler systems. Now, the ordinance already has the factors that the city council or the MRA needs to consider before approving any incentives. For example, I want to know the number of jobs, salaries, type of investment. It'll also look at any impact to city services. Those are currently listed within the ordinance. You have to do that for any incentive out of the fund, and you would also have to do it for the locally-owned businesses. So with that, it also requires two-thirds majority vote. All of the things I did is added a section to allow the funding to be expended for locally-owned businesses. City council makes the final decision on the ordinance. However, since the MRA does have the authority to expend the funds, I felt it was appropriate to take it before this committee, get a recommendation before forwarding it on to city council on the next agenda. Be glad to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd recommend approval of ordinance 4183A.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Garvin, Ms. McGee?
I do. I read through this, Mr. Garvin, and I just wanted to know, when we talk about the high-impact business, and then we define it as retail and non-retail development activity.
Correct.
My question is on retail. What do we consider to be a high-impact, I mean, a skill?
When it talks about high-impact, what it's talking about is high-skill jobs, high-wage jobs, and it could be a multitude of different things. Typically, it's not going to be like your restaurant or your retail sales. It's going to be something that would generate a high wage and, or be high-skilled in order to fill that position.
Okay, so that doesn't apply to the small business?
It does not. It does not.
Okay, so then when we get down here to the local-owned businesses, that's where the small businesses come in, because that was the concern, correct?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
And so in that category, the high skill does not apply there?
No, it does not.
Okay.
And it also expands, before it was just for new jobs coming to Muskogee. This one is also for existing jobs, expanding existing business, or again relocating or opening a new business.
Are we going to put a dollar figure on that?
No, we did not. A sales tax rebate, we did. This one, we did not.
Okay, because I was just thinking on, if you're dealing with small business in Muskogee and you're doing a sales tax rebate, it would take them forever to pay that back, so I don't think that that is a very good incentive like that for small business. But if we're dealing with this particular in local business, I think we should have a dollar amount on there. I think it would better suit what a small business can do, just in my mind.
The concern I had, and you're absolutely correct on the sales tax, it's hard for a small business to generate enough sales tax to get a rebate.
Yes.
Unless they're creating a new business.
Mm-hmm.
Or they're doubling the size of their existing business.
Correct.
So I felt like on this one, we didn't necessarily want to put a minimum dollar amount, because they may just come in and want to replace all their equipment, and it may be $25,000.
Okay.
At least you would have the opportunity, or this committee would have the opportunity to look at it and say, you know, we're going to assist with 50% of the cost, or whatever. It'll be up to y'all to decide.
Okay.
The difference between the sales tax and the Economic Development Fund is, within the Economic Development Fund, you got a limited amount of funds.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you get budgeted every year, but there is a limited amount, so you will, might have to pick and choose which project to fund.
Okay.
Sales tax could possibly be for any business, and it could be ongoing, because it's sales tax, new sales taxes created after the expansion, and I'll get more into that when we talk about the sales tax rebate.
Okay, and also, listen, let me ask this, because I do understand that in this Economic Development Fund, we have a general account, and then we have the opportunity account.
Correct.
When we get over here and we talk about 60% of that money goes into the general fund, correct?
Yes, I know.
It's in here.
The general account is different than the general fund, if I may interject. So the general account stays within the Economic Development Fund.
Okay, so.
There's the economic opportunity account, which in it, I think there's about 1.1 million currently.
If we can go to D on page 23, tell me if you can kind of read that for me, because you got it all in here together, and we're going to be voting on this, so we really want to know what we voting on tonight.
And I'd be glad to read it, and it's just a small section that we're changing, because again, all the other factors are currently included in the ordinance itself.
Okay.
But D says, "For the purpose of assisting in the development and redevelopment of a locally-owned business, a locally-owned business is defined as a business that is located within the limits of the City of Muskogee, and owner of said business shall physically live in and have an address within the 74401 or 74403 ZIP code. Funding for locally-owned businesses may be budgeted and expended for, including but not limited to, the following purposes: new business, expanding existing business, relocating business, purchase or replacement equipment, installing and replacing infrastructure, fire and sprinkler system."
No, no, sir, I understand that. That's not what's going on. I'm going to page 23D when we're talking about.
I haven't, mine's not numbered that way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought somebody, the D that we revised.
Okay, if you keep on reading, that's at the end. That's what we were revising, but when we get over here, because you have it all in here, are we voting on all of this tonight? Or are we voting on D?
We're voting on the amendment. Yes, everything else is existing.
Okay, everything else exists.
I've just added that one section. It's the only change.
Okay, I got you now.
Further discussions for Mr. Garvin, or do we have a motion?
Ashley, Mayor, this is an item that is up for review and recommendation, not for vote.
Okay.
Yeah, council makes the final approval now.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. Item number five.
Discuss and take action to develop a plan to hold interviews of candidates for the position of Economic Development Director.
Let me first thank the city attorney's office for having been the bearer of receiving all of the applications, and also to Mr. Garvin for having worked to rate and rank those applicants. We're now ready to move forward. The first question I have for this body is, what is your availability, or are you available, rather, next week, so that we can have a special call meeting to look at those candidates? And then during that meeting, we will schedule interviews for that following week. So I'm asking, what is your availability basically over the next two weeks, so that we can get this process done, with the first being a special call meeting on next week, so that we can look at the applicants? And in that meeting, we will also decide the times and dates for which one should be interviewed. So is everyone available, and does that make sense?
Will the whole, the whole body do this, or we'll just send it to the executive committee?
The whole body. Are we clear with what I just asked?
When is the first date you have available?
I'm just looking for, what I'll do is ask, some staff person will probably contact the council to see what day is actually available, but I need to know over the next two weeks, are we clear to be able to do that?
Yes.
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 Okay, any other questions about item number five? Thank you. That meeting is now adjourned. We will go to the city council meeting for January 23, 2023. We have the roll call. You, yes. Oh.
Mine is missing.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Here.
Thank you. We will now consider the minutes for the city council special call for September 8, 2022, September 19, 2022, December 5, 2022, December 19, 2022, and January 9, 2023, and the regular city council meeting for December 12. Do we have any corrections to those minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve on said minutes. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items numbers one through nine. Do we have any items that need to be moved to the regular agenda, or do we have a motion to approve to consider agenda as presented?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, thank you. Item number 10.
Receive presentation of financial audit for City of Muskogee Foundation for fiscal year 2021, 2022, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is part of our oversight of the City of Muskogee Foundation. They do have an audit they'd like to present. Mr. Frank Merrick and former Mayor Ren Stratten are here on behalf of the foundation to present that to you.
I'm happy to say again this year, we got a clean audit, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I think each one of you have seen a copy, and if there are any questions, concerns, I'm happy to address those.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Do we have any questions concerning the audit presentation in item number 10? Do we have a motion to approve the audit?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on item number 10? Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 10 passes. Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Item number 11.
Consider approval to authorize submission of letters of intent to the City of Muskogee Foundation for fiscal year 2023, 2024 grant cycle for city projects as follows. A senior station parking Jefferson Highway Historical Plaza, $30,000. B teen center YVC operations, $150,000. C demolition and beautification, $300,000, with a $50,000 CIP match. And D city attorney juvenile and adult community service program, $100,000, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, thanks, Mayor, members of council. This is the time of the year when we submit letters of intent to the City of Muskogee Foundation for their annual grant budget cycle. This year, they do have a reduced budget. It's $700,000. That includes summer grants. That is less than their usual amount. I think last year, it was about $2 million for the new, new grants that they're going to award. Now, keep in mind, they do award a lot of multi-year grants. They're going to be dispersing a lot more than this $700,000 in the next year. Our letters of intent are due on the 9th. We don't have a council meeting before then, and so we're bringing those before you today. Given the lower budget, we have pared down our requests from the city. These are the four that you've already heard talked about. The adult juvenile community service program, which helps us reduce our jail time and helps our people work off their fines. Demolition and cleanup, we know the need for that in our community, and this is a big part of our demolition and cleanup budget every year. budget every year. The YVC and teen program operations budget comes from the Foundation every year. And Senior Station Plaza is one that we'd like to talk just about briefly. This is a capital program that we, Parks has proposed. It's part of the master plan for the new senior center. That little V-shaped area there between, I think, 17th and Junction would be used, developed into overflow parking and a Jefferson Highway Tourism Memorial. So we're, the request is for the council to match half of the grant request to the Foundation to, out of our tourism funds, to match that grant. So we would be asking, we understand, 580,000 out of a $700,000 budget. We know that's hard for us to do, but those are all kind of essential ongoing programs that we fund highly through the Foundation. And just as a point of reference, last year, we asked for more than $5 million out of a $2 million budget. So we're not, we scaled back considerably, and I do want us to say we're trying to be aware of the situation. So that being said, we'd be happy to answer any questions. This is our opportunity. We don't submit for grants without the blessing of the council, and this is our last meeting before the deadline. So this is why we're bringing this forward to you today. If you want us to go forward with any one of these or all of these, we need that approval at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I think that the only recommendation I would have to this body, I think that all of these programs are absolutely needed. We need to do everything that's on this list. I am conflicted only because, and I think several others are as well, that with such a smaller budget, we have so many organizations, nonprofits, that are going to be a lot smaller than us, that are going to be asking for this pile of money of the $700,000. And I think what I'd like the body to consider is that we're fortunate that under Mr. Miller and the staff's leadership, that we did plan a reserve fund for emergencies. And in my observation, I think that this budget cycle during the foundation where they had to make the cuts that they made because the market being in flux warrants us the opportunity to consider if we would take those funds from that area versus being at the mercy of the Foundation and putting ourselves in a situation where other organizations who are much smaller than we are don't have the reserve fund that we have to look at those funds. So my, my thought process for this body would be for us to consider directing staff to bring us a budget allocation that takes all of these projects that we would consider presented through the letter of intent through our reserve fund, not as a routine basis where we would normally do that when we do have a foundation, but in the budget cycle when the budget has been cut so low that we would allow that competition process to happen for those small organizations and not the City of Muskogee. The prime example I have was this year, the Muskogee Public Schools withdrew all of their applications from that process because of the severity of the cuts, and they wanted to be in a position where they could help the city entities, those nonprofits, without being at the table to compete with those funds. So that would be my desire for this body to consider us looking at that to fund these requests versus presenting the traditional letter of intent.
I'll make a motion to that.
Mr. Merrick, can I be recognized?
Yes, Ms. McGee.
I just have, I just have one question on that. Do we know what our reserves are? Mike, do you know what that number is?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, it's over 6 million, the last I looked. Dennis is nodding at me, so if, we did that in our, we did that in November, but I've slept since then. Forgive me, when I presented that number. I'll be happy to get it to you, to you all by, by email tonight or tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Moore Jones has made a motion, I guess, in effect for what I presented.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 11, with the understanding, Ms. McGee, we'll get that number this week, what we have. And again, we're not voting to actually physically do that tonight, but we're looking at doing that instead of presenting LOI. So when we see that number, we have something better to talk about. Further discussion on the motion?
Are we, are we withholding, withdrawing our LOI?
So we've not submitted it. That's this purpose. So if, if we vote to not submit, then we will not be eligible for grant funding this year. And this is our opportunity to do that, and if we choose not to, that's the choice that the council makes.
So a yes vote is what, Katrina?
Can you say that again, please?
A yes vote on the mayor's motion would be to?
To not ask the Foundation for any money, to not submit any LOIs.
So a yes would be a no?
Yes would be a no.
And to pursue funding through our reserves.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
May I be recognized?
Yes, Dr. Hoos.
I'm glad that we're taking this into consideration because a lot of our nonprofits are the backbone of our community, doing, doing things that we don't want to do, taking care of kids that have been abused, taking care of women that have been abused. And I think that this is, that I'm glad we're considering this just to pull our, to not compete against them this year in this tide of a grant cycle.
All right. We clear on how we're voting?
May I, yes.
Ms. Boyadi Craig?
State that again, because the agenda item says, "Consider approval to authorize the submission of the letter of intent." So if we vote yes, that, does that not mean that we are approving? So we need clarif, I need clarification.
So my motion was that we pursue other options in lieu of submitting the letter of intent.
Right.
So a yes is we're not submitting the letter of intent.
Okay.
Or we're pursuing other options.
Correct. Okay, we're going to self-fund it.
Yes.
All right.
Are we clear?
Yes.
Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 11, as presented, passes. Did I say that correct, Katrina?
Yes.
Item number 12.
Hold a hearing, discuss, and take any necessary action related to an appeal of the finding by the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board issued on December 28, 2022, that the structure located at 2018 West Shawnee Royal Inn is dilapidated and has become detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the general public as to constitute a public nuisance and/or creates a fire hazard which is dangerous to other property.
I believe that Ms. Tracy has a mechanism in place that we need to start following tonight. She's going to call for a, I'll let you tell what you're going to do.
We need to put you under oath for your testimony tonight. If you'll raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Salix.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council members. We are here this evening to discuss the appeal on 2018 Shawnee Boulevard, the Royal Inn. As you know, or as you may be aware, this is a case that has been going on for a long time. I have a legal map of the area, so you can see where it's located on Shawnee Boulevard. These are photos of the hotel, 2018 West Shawnee, so the Royal Inn. You can see the condition the hotel I put together a little background, so you know, we have had cases open on this property since August 17, 2017, from multiple violations, including weeds and grass, dilapidated personal property, as, as well as an unsafe structure. Multiple extensions were given to the property owners to bring the property into compliance since 2017. Unfortunately, that has not happened. The Muskogee Police Department has received 133 calls for service since we began this process on August 17, 2017. After all code enforcement action was undertaken and the property owners failed to bring the property into compliance, this case was forwarded to the Public Nuisance Review Committee, the PNRC, on September 29. The PNRC voted unanimously to forward this case for demolition to the Uniform Building Code of Appeals Board, what we call UPCAP. On November 30, 2022, UPCAP voted unanimously in agreement with the PNRC, and they asked us to expedite this case, place it on the demolition list, and forward it to the city contractor for demolition. The property owners then filed an appeal with the City of Muskogee on December 28, 2022. Our recommendation is to uphold the finding of the Uniform Building Code of Appeals Board issued on December 28, 2022, deny this appeal, and allow the property to be placed on the demolition list to be demolished by our city contractor. I also have prepared a copy for the council of all enforcement action. I would like to present that to the mayor. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Salix. We have three individuals having signed to speak to us tonight. The first is the legal counsel for those involved, Ms. Betty Williams. If you come to the microphone and give us your name and your address after taking direction from Ms. Tammy, you'll have five minutes.
My name, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Betty Uthea Williams. I'm an attorney of more than 50 years, 45 of which were spent as an attorney here in Muskogee, Oklahoma. My present address is in Tulsa because I'm supposed to be retired, and it is Post Office Box 35324, Tulsa, Oklahoma, 74153.
And if it be so kind, I think she's going to ask you to follow the same procedure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. You may proceed.
I am here on behalf of both Minaj Patel, who is here beside me, and Kamlish Patel, who is sitting beside Minaj. They are also, both have asked to talk to you so that you can find out what in fact has happened in this situation. If you will have noticed, there was no real property issue in the list until 2022. But this is a demolition of real property, not personal property, or grass, or weeds, or a response to police calls. Minaj Patel owns this property, and he does not deny that it is not up to code. That is not why we are here tonight. Why we are here tonight is because Minaj Patel wants to bring the property back to code by selling it to Kamlish Patel, a gentleman who has taken many, many motels over the many years and actually brought them up to code, got them into franchises, and made them very useful to the cities. I drove around a little while ago, and I don't think you're short of land that doesn't have anything on it. I do think you are short of, of motels that actually would produce and be available for visitors to this city. What was left out of Mrs. Salich's presentation was that before the December 28 hearing, she was aware that a contract had already been signed on this property for Days Inn to franchise it. And for those of you who may know about franchises, you know, requires them not to only be up to city code and be inspected by the franchise company on a regular basis, but go far beyond what is required by our city. They were aware of that particular document had been signed and that the bank had already authorized a loan of money, subject to one thing. There can't be a demolition order. So if there's a demolition order, you're going to have a plot out there on Shawnee in an area where there are a bunch of other things that either are plots or about to be. Or you can have a nice Days Inn by a man who knows how to do this and knows how to bring it about so that it could be a nice addition to what I consider to be our city. That's what I'm here for tonight, is to ask that you not have the demolition order. Yes, I know it means they would have to go back through it if this didn't happen. But when a bank says they're willing to borrow them, to loan the money, it's a pretty good bet they're going to do it. That's the only thing holding it up right now, is with, you're withdrawing the demolition order, work begins. Mr. Kalpech Patel would like to meet the tourist season of Muskogee. He has every incentive to get it up there, running. He's a man who buys these, brings them up to code, and finds people who want to invest in them. And at this time, I will turn it over to, to Mr. Patel's.
Well, actually, do we have any questions for Ms. Williams from the council?
Now, Ms. Williams, you just made a statement under oath that we were aware that there was a transaction on this property.
No, I said that Mrs. Saricius, or whatever her name is, was, that was actually, that is in the minutes of the hearing, that they don't want to have to go through this transfer because if it fell through, then they would have to go through their whole process again. They are aware of it from, one, the appeal letter that was written by Minaj Patel, which I hope you were provided with, and with the letter from the bank, which I hope you were provided with. It was faxed to both Ms. Saric, and when she said it shouldn't come to her, she gave a name for a Jessica, and it was sent to Jessica as well. So you should have that letter from the bank stating that the bunny is there, and Betty, for Mr. Kamlish.
May I respond to that?
Ms. Salix.
Yes, thank you. Under no circumstances were we advised that there was a Days Inn contract or anything of that nature pending. The only thing that the second Mr. Patel mentioned was he was trying to secure funding from a bank, and we had asked for that letter, but the bank had not approved it. It was just an application. It was an intention. It was not an approval letter of any way. And for the record, it's Salix. My name, Suzanne Salix.
Okay. In her, in his appeal letter, which was received by the city clerk on December 13, 2022, which should be included for you, it says, "I have talked to a friend of mine to help with such takeover. His name is Kalpech Patel. He is willing to purchase and renovate the motel. He has made good progress with the, with the bank to get it financed." And it's true, it was December 28 before the bank letter was faxed here. And it said, "He has, he has already signed the franchise agreement with Days Inn. So upon restoration, it will be nationally flagged." So that was in the, the appeal itself, written on the document.
Thank you. Any other questions before we bring our other guests up?
I just want to make sure, did you get that in the documentation, Mrs.?
Yes, it came through the clerk's office. It should be at the top of that file, if that's the same letter the young lady's referring to.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for calling me, yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The next person having signed to speak to us tonight, and please excuse me if I don't pronounce your name correctly, Minaj Patel. If you'll come to the microphone, give us your name and your address without any other direction from Ms. Tammy, you'll have five minutes.
Okay. My name is Minaj Patel. My address is 4708 West Louisville Place, Broken Arrow, Oklahoma.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I will say the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
And I did make an appeal on that. I do have a buyer, Kalpech Patel, and I'm not denying anything on what happened to the property. There was a lot of incident happening in the family as well, so that's the reason the property went on that lax situation. But I do have a potential buyer. He has everything to buy that, turn it into a national flag, Days Inn, and, you know, I'm ready for him to buy that because he is, he has several properties in Texas, and, you know, he's, he's willing to do it. He has the finance, he has the letter, he has everything. I would like you to revoke the demolition project. And can I call Kalpech Patel?
We'll call him up in just a minute. Do we have any other questions from this body for Mr. Patel?
Do you, do you have a binding contract between you?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you. We will now call to the microphone, and I apologize. Mr. Kalpech Patel, if you'll come to the microphone, give us your name and your address. You'll have five minutes with other directions from Ms. Tammy Tracy.
My name is Kalpech Patel. Address is 806 Pennsylvania Avenue, Canadaville, Texas, 76060.
Okay. You'll raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. You may proceed.
So before I start, I made several copies of the Days Inn P list. P would be something that, Property Improvement Plan.
Okay.
So a couple of corrections in the understanding with Ms. Salix. The date when we provided these letter from the bank, we were still in the process of getting the financing, and I have explained to them that the financing doesn't happen just overnight, as some of us have bought homes and whatnot. At least, we know from that standpoint as well, that it takes few days, few documents to be aligned. So on our end, the survey was done, we were waiting for the appraisal. And as soon as the appraisal would have came in, they would have actually gone and approved our loan. At this point in time, as of today, we do have the financing in place. We are just waiting for city to give us a green light in order for, for my side to go forward, to carry forward with the renovations and improving the property. I stopped by at the bank this afternoon on my way up here. The bank is located in Sherman, Texas, and I think you guys have seen the letter that the bank provided. So that is the letter that is, we are literally ready to go ahead and get the funds from them. As of first Friday of this month, we were waiting to close this loan only upon one condition, two conditions. One is, obviously, city would not carry forward on the demolition. And on a title company, we needed one person's signature so they can have a clear title. That person is flying in tomorrow from overseas vacation, so we would have that as well. We have the confirmation that she will go ahead and sign off on it. So at this point in time, we are, I'm pretty much ready to take, take over and do the, do renovations. On the Days Inn franchise, when you guys see that, obviously, they have their list of items for us to be done in order for us to have the Days Inn franchise, we would do, as a business owner, my duty is actually to do more than what they would require. I had made a little presentation to show you guys as well, who we are, what we do, what properties do we have. We are in Oklahoma. The close by, I have Spring Hill Suites by Marriott in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and Lakentine Gentry, Oklahoma. We have properties in New Mexico, Texas, North and South Texas. So I've been in this business since 2006, so we know what it takes for, for us to be successful when it comes to managing hotel, renovating hotel, and carrying a national flag. Days Inn is an international flag. They have about 1,600 properties all over the world. They are represented in about 20 countries. So you, you guys would be getting some of the customers that have lived far and beyond. Another couple of things, by approving this project to go further, city would be roughly getting about $64,000 or so in sales tax, not counting the property tax that city would be getting. Obviously, I know it's an ISO right now, but once it's renovated, it literally would be a good-looking property. I'll take some questions if you guys have any.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Do we have any questions from this body for the presenter?
I have a question. Have you gotten the appraisal in on it yet?
So, yes, we have the appraisal in on it. Matter of fact, to make the timeline, we actually paid extra so that we can get the appraisal done in a, at a lightning speed, basically. And during Thanksgiving and Christmas and all that, we would actually get the appraisal in about two and a half weeks. So we have the appraisal. The bank is literally ready for us to go ahead and sign on the fine lines.
Is this $1,049 that they've approved you for, does that, is that for purchase and then for part of the renovation?
So that is for the purchase, part of renovation. That does not include the down payment that I have to put in.
How, how much did it appraise for? Okay. Is that subject to renovation?
Definitely. Yes, ma'am.
Have you received any bids on how much it's going to cost to renovate?
So I have my own development company as well. In my company, basically, that's my job to go ahead and seek out for the land, for the franchise, for the financing. So that's what I do. I have a construction company as well. I actually, on top of it, I brought another friend of mine. He's a contractor as well, to make sure that I don't oversee certain things that, or I might discount just because I'm thinking about purchasing or what have you. So we have did our math, and we think we can actually do the full renovation with the funds.
Plus purchase the property?
Definitely, yes.
Under a million dollars, or right at a million dollars?
It'll be about 1.5.
Other questions?
Yes.
Ms. Perlin Boyadi Craig?
Approximately, how long will it take for those renovations to be complete? Because it was mentioned that it needed to be done by our tourism date line, so.
So I got involved in this transaction late in the game, in the sense that I think about August or so time, if I remember correctly, that's what I got involved in. I didn't think it was going to be to this extent, where I had to come here and we had to be delayed and whatnot. My goal was actually to go ahead and have the property open by March 1, so that we can get summer business. For hospitality, summer is one of the, the best business we can get. The advantage of having the, open during summer is also that the guests would come in, they'll try you out, and if they're out and about again in this town, they'll, we'll have a repeat business. So our goal is to actually get as much repeat business as we can, because that's the cheapest way of acquiring the business. So, yes, my goal was to get it So, yes, my goal was to get it by, uh, March first. If we're going right now, uh, due to certain delays of the, uh, supply chain and whatnot, I have a feeling that we can still probably get it done within six months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Thank you. No other residents have signed to speak to this honor. We will now close the public hearing. What is the will of this body?
I move that we give him an opportunity to, um, uh, invest in our city and bring that, uh, into compliance. I mean, if we can, um, if he's willing to invest, uh, what was it, one point five million into the city of Muskogee, I think it's, um, ideal. And we give him the time allotted to do it. After all, the least you can do, if you don't give, if you don't make it within time, then you take action.
I make a motion to go ahead and tear it down. I just don't see that's going, like, it'll cost one point five. I think it's going to cost a lot more than that.
Would there be a timeframe for him to do the remodels? If, if that was to pass?
Definitely, pardon me, definitely, we could set a timeframe in which to, uh, obtain the building permit, provide us with a work schedule, yes. We could certainly set that, get the bond for the property. All of those steps could be outlined.
But to proceed right now with his bank, he's got to get it off this list, this demolition.
That's correct. And so one of the things that we, uh, a tool that we've had and possibly used in the past is to put up a bond that would cover a demolition, should they not fulfill their obligations of renovation. So that, um, that they could make a good faith effort to, uh, to do that. If not, then we have a bond that would cover the, the demolition expenses at that point.
But if none of these things happen, we go through the process all over again. Right? If we remove it from the list tonight?
No, you don't.
Then what happens if nothing gets done?
Tear it down?
If we remove it from the list, we're basically granting their appeal and start over. Unless you want to put restrictions in place. But in that situation, it could not be removed from the list.
I agree with Counselor Jones. I'm gonna support that we uphold the recommendation of the Uniform Building Code Appeals Board. But Counselor McGee has started off saying, I don't know if that was a motion.
Yeah, I was making a motion that we move for and allow them to invest in this city. We don't need another parking lot. I mean, and I'm saying this for a reason. We did that on sixty-nine highway, and you can see what we got out there right now. We got a parking lot. They told, they towed the hotel down, and there has been nothing since then. So if you look around the city of Muskogee, we tear down structures, as we did on Main when the building failed. It's still empty. When we get someone in our city that's willing to invest in our city, then we should allow them the opportunity. We're talking about a new buyer. And I've been in this process before with the city, so I know how it goes. And I'm just saying that we are here to make Muskogee a better place. We should be investing in our city, and we shouldn't be tearing down if we can't put them back up. So that's just my motion.
Ms. Bodenhammer, will you help clarify what that motion would be in case it gets a second?
Yes, so a, a proper way to state the motion, for clarity purposes, would be a motion to grant the appeal filed by the owner of Royal Inn to remove the property from the demolition list.
That would be the motion. Is there a second?
I'm in a second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, to remove this property from the demolition list. Are we clear on what we're voting on?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we put an amount of time on there? Because I feel like we should give them the benefit of the doubt if they're wanting to invest in Muskogee, but if we go, if six months goes by and there's not a thing done out there, then we're going to have to start all over?
Ms. Bodenhammer?
Yes, that's correct. If they, if their appeal is granted, the process would have to restart.
I don't know if we had a timeframe in the original motion.
Uh, timeframe, uh, six months, I think that's the standard time, isn't it?
Well, it, we would, we would ask them to, uh, obtain a permit by a certain date and, and fulfill these other requests. With all due respects, I, Council, Councilwoman McGee, I agree with you, uh, about that. I don't want cement parking lots in our community, but do know that we've worked years with this property owner to try to get, and we've heard this before, we have a new owner, we have a new owner. It's never gotten to this point. I've never seen the Days Inn document. I'm very interested in seeing that, but I just, it's, this is a tough one. I'm going to be honest, it is a real tough one.
Ms. Williams, the public hearing is closed.
Anyway, I just wanted to state that.
Thank you.
If we may, i- if we can put the steps in and give them that opportunity, um, six months more is not going to hurt us. It really will not. Allow someone to really invest in our city, because we're supposed to be moving forward. And with that in mind, we should do that.
So Ms. Bodenhammer, what would the motion be considering the time that is being recommended?
So a motion would be to grant the appeal filed by the Royal Inn homeowner and allow them a period of six months for renovation and opening of the business. And during that time period, they would have to apply for and get the proper remodel permits and a demolition bond.
So if I may, the, um, what, what may accomplish your goal is to set out what those things are, and when those things are met, then it's removed from the list. And so if there's a, if, for instance, a demolition bond is something that we require, or if we come up with a list of here's what is needed, and then it will be taken off, if these, if these certain things are met, then, then, because otherwise, we're unconditionally, um, granting the appeal. If you want to conditionally grant it, this is the time, I guess I should say.
And that's correct. And I also want to say, uh, even though I'm gonna vote no, that the motion still needs to be cleared up, that we're not giving them six months to open up a brand-new hotel. That wouldn't be fair. We're giving them six months to do whatever they need to do, to satisfy whatever those requirements are. Am I correct? You don't expect to see a brand-new hotel in six months, or do you?
No, I, I expected him to start working, as she just said, on the project, to show forth good faith, that he is going to transfer that, uh, transform that motel out there till Days Inn. That's what I'm saying. And in six months, we should see some work, from what he's saying, that they have done it before.
May I be recognized?
Yes, Ms. Craig. Boyadi Craig?
Did he not say that the loan cannot be secured unless it is off the demolition list?
Yes.
So how can we say that that would be one of the, uh, provisions? By keeping it on the demolition list for a certain time? We can't do that. We either have to vote to take it off? Or we vote to?
Well, I think if he, if he has a conditional permission, I think that would qualify. If the bank says if it's not on the list, then it's not, uh, then we will approve the loan, then that would be enough to remove it from the list. The, the question before the council is what, if any, conditions are there to the motion that, uh, Counselor McGee has made? There can be zero conditions and take it off.
Okay.
Or there can be conditions, and if so, um, those can be discussed.
I wonder would his, his bank accept from us if we see in good faith, or, I was thinking, they said it just has to be off there.
I did too. That's what I thought was saying.
And it would be easy to take it off if there were, for instance, a demolition bond, which is what we did on the hotel on Thirty-second Street that you referred to. They said, give us more time, and we'll demolish it ourselves. And so they put up a bond, and we didn't have to call it, because they did what they said. And so in this case, we could ask them to put up a bond that would cover demolition if they didn't fulfill, uh, their obligations.
So Ms. Bodenhammer, we need clarity on what we're voting on, in terms of the conditions to go into this motion, uh, so that we can give an answer. I'm not sure if we're clear.
There are, there are none proposed, no conditions proposed by the?
Yes, at this time, all we have is, really is the motion to remove it, to grant the appeal and remove it from the demolition list. So, um, we would need to have conditions added, if you wanted specific conditions to the motion.
Okay, to get it off the list so that he'll be able to get his approval from the bank, right? And my condition would be that he, uh, start working on the project, that he get all the permits that he has to have, that qualify through our planning department, and that he begin working immediately on the structure. And then we'll come back and view it in six months to see if there's any, uh, progress, and if it is, we keep moving. If not, then we take the demolition, uh, bond and tear it down.
So to clarify the motion, it would be, would this be a motion to take no action as far as removing it from the?
Take it off the demo list, so that he will be able to get the loan.
And can we do the demolition bond? Would that hurt him, though, in his endeavor to get financing? If there's, if we take him off the list and we have a demolition bond?
Now, the bond is only callable if they don't do?
Are there not two different parties? Isn't one party getting the loan, and one party would be getting the demo bond? So, well, we shouldn't, one, that shouldn't hurt? The acquirement of the demo bond. Sellers getting the demo bond, buyers getting the loan.
Thank you, Alex.
We have a motion and a second.
Are they willing to do this?
Could you read the motion? I mean, what's our motion again?
So the, the motion would be to grant the appeal? Remove the property from the demolition list, require a demolition bond in an amount equal to the cost of demolishing the building? And require that permits be, the proper permits be taken through the city of Muskogee.
Within, what, thirty days?
Yes. How long do it take them to get those permits?
Within thirty days.
Within thirty days. Yes, Jamie? Yeah.
And then, we, we want to know if they would be willing to accept, if we did this, if they'd? I mean, would the property owners be willing to accept this recommendation?
I'm happy to hear a yes or a no, Ms. Williams, or those who would like to? You may approach the microphone. Ms. Williams, you can as well, since we're entertaining questions on whether or not it's acceptable. Ms. Stout?
Yes, I, if we do what was suggested, I'll have Katrina reread that motion, if you guys would be willing to, if we make this exception, if, if you guys would be willing to accept this. Will you reread the motion?
Yes, so the motion would be to grant the appeal, remove the property from demolition list, with the requirement that a demolition bond be posted within thirty days, equal to the amount it will cost to demolish the building, if appropriate action is not taken, within six months? Was that your motion? And that the appropriate permits be taken out through the city of Muskogee within, for remodeling, within thirty days.
So regarding the demolition, uh, that would be up to the owner to accept that or not. That's up to him. Uh, on my side, I'm ready to go ahead and get the permit as soon as you guys tell me, and once the bank closes the loan. Keep in mind, in order for me to close the loan with the bank, it's going to cost me money for the closing cost and whatnot. So I need to make sure that this thing is, that this property is off the list, in order for me to get the loan. Uh, without that, I don't have a clear title. Without the clear title, we cannot close the loan. Everything just dominos, uh, one after the other. So in order for us to move forward, this has to be off the list. We have renovated property, uh, got our renovation just like this. I don't have a problem, uh, following the city codes. We have done it everywhere else. Uh, we do, if I didn't do things right, I wouldn't be standing here. In my past life, I was a pharmacist, so I know what it takes to be professional. I know what it takes to be, uh, one of the, uh, best profession in the world. So I don't have a problem doing anything and everything that you guys require. At this point in time, uh, I have actually visited the city and talked to Jessica. I was ready to go ahead and put three hundred dollar, uh, contractor's, uh, permit, but we weren't sure exactly where you guys stood. That, that was the reason we held back. Um, so yes, I'm ready, uh, if, if you guys take it off the list.
Would, we need to find, would the owner be, he would be the one to do the demolition bond?
The, the owner is willing to accept the demolition bond. My problem is?
Do you know the cost?
My problem is, you're saying that it, this is subject to being taken off. It needs to be taken off. Even if you order Mr. Minaj Patel to do something, it has to be off in order for this to proceed.
So my understanding would be that when, when the demolition bond was received, then it would be removed from the list?
Okay, so it'd be, who, all these people?
Would be a conditional, it would be a conditional?
It's going to set the, the bond.
So we have, uh, an estimated price for what that demolition would be.
Okay. When, do you want to tell us what that amount is?
Uh, I'll have to, we?
They're two dollars a square foot. We'd have to calculate. Two dollars per square foot.
Well, that's not the estimate that we have.
Oh, you're talking about for the demo?
Yes.
Okay. So can that be communicated?
That's something we can work on this evening.
To either me, Mr. Patel?
Contractors here, would you like to?
Yeah. Um, yeah, the, the gentleman who supplied us the estimate is right here, so he'll, he may be telling us, Suzanne, right now.
Oh, he's right there.
Sorry about that. Sixty-two thousand, it was estimated at, and it's a three-week job to demolish.
Last call. On the motion. Are we clear, a yes is to remove it? Or no is to?
Condition to the, subject to those conditions.
No is to tear it down? Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Hous?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
No.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
No.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
No. The motion, uh, as presented by Counselor McGee passes. Item number thirteen.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-one eighty-three A of the city of Muskogee, Oklahoma, amending chapter seventy-four taxation, article eight, use tax, section seventy-four dash two thirty-seven, economic development fund, by adding section seventy-four dash two thirty-seven, C, one, D, providing for repealer and severability, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Garvin?
Mayor, members of the council, this is for an amendment to the Economic Development Fund by, to add a section to allow locally-owned businesses to apply for and receive funding through the economic development account. Uh, this is the same item we just discussed in the MRA agenda. Be glad to go through it again, otherwise, I'd recommend approval of ordinance number forty-one eighty-three dash eight.
Thank you, Mr. Garvin. Any further discussion on item number thirteen? Or do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second on item number thirteen. Roll call.
Perlin Boyadi Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Hous?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Jones?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, item number thirteen passes. Item number fourteen.
Consider approval of ordinance number forty-one eighty-four A, amending the city of Muskogee Code of Ordinances, chapter two, administration, article three, purchases and payments by the city by amending section two dash sixty-three, when bidding is not required, by raising the threshold for when bidding is required to five thousand dollars in a single transaction, providing for repealer severability and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Um, so currently, our ordinance requires competitive bidding, uh, for anything over two thousand. Our policy is actually restricted to a thousand. So we are requesting to raise those, uh, that threshold to five thousand, which would get us in line with, uh, state guidelines. And, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have any questions from the council on this policy change?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see a hand up. Ms. McGee?
I just had a question on that. Is that there'll be no split payments? So, you, you know what I mean?
No.
Okay, I mean, I want that in there. I want that in the motion because I know that that happens where you may have an invoice and then you're thinking, split the payment so that you don't have to get approval. So I just want that, if we can put that in there, I'm with it, but I don't want split payments on that.
And that's already in, in our existing policy that we can't do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number fourteen passes. Item number fifteen.
Consider approval of final payment to Rosscon LLC in the amount of seven thousand twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents for the north Forty-third Street East, Forty-fifth Street East, Hancock Road and Chandler Road intersection improvements, project number two zero two zero 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 nine, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Reeves is actually going to address that.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
This was a street resurfacing improvement project that basically required that the streets be improved at Forty-third Street East, Chandler Road to Gibson Street, Forty-fifth Street East, Chandler Road to Calory Street, Hancock Road, Forty-first Street East to the pollution plant, Chandler Road intersection improvements, Forty-third and Forty-Fifth, Forty-first, I'm sorry. Concrete improvements were included in this, median improvements, signal improvements, signage improvements, and striping improvements to all this area. Staff does recommend approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Do we have any questions on item number fifteen, or do we have a motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number fifteen. Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number fifteen passes. Item number sixteen.
Consider approval of change order number one for Hat Box Baseball Paving, project number two zero two two zero two three to Rosscon LLC in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars for soft spot repair, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Mayor and council, this is a change order for work, being, ongoing work at Hat Box, the baseball complex, for pouring a lot of concrete out there. There were three soft spots discovered once they started the grading work out there. So, the change orders to take care of those three soft spots. And staff's in agreement and would recommend approval.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Wilkerson? Or do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on item number sixteen. Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number sixteen passes. Item number seventeen.
Consider approval to allow staff to remove the traffic signals located at Third and Broadway Street and Fourth and Broadway Streets intersections, replacing them with stop signs or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, Mr. Rigley is going to assist me with this, but I will tell you that those are antiquated traffic signals at Third and Fourth and Broadway. And, uh, Fourth and Broadway has actually been down for quite some time, so we contracted with the traffic engineering consultants who does all our engineering work for traffic signals, and to see if they were actually needed there, if they met the warrants for a traffic signal, and they did not. And, Mr. Rigley has a, a presentation he's going to give, and then I'll assist with questions if needed.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Stewart, pretty much got all of the points I was going to make. They were antiquated systems and they were becoming ineffective cost-wise for us to maintain. We have numerous traffic signals all over town, and these two are the only two of their kind, and they do not fit into the maintenance contract that we currently have. So, staff took some photos and photoshopped in some stop signs so you could see what this might look like in the future. So, when you're looking at these, these are one-way streets involved, so they will be three-way stops, and that is at the recommendation of the street committee that we stop traffic in all directions. So if you look at the presentation, we have eastbound Third Street and Broadway, westbound Third and Broadway, southbound Third and Broadway, and then eastbound Fourth and Broadway, westbound Fourth and Broadway, and northbound Fourth and Broadway. These will be LED traffic, or LED stop signs rather, to make sure that they're visible. And one thing that will be on the street but is not in the renderings that we have is a stop script on the street. That is to bring more attention to it since there are angled parking along the side of Broadway. Staff recommends approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the staff, or what is the will of the body on item number seventeen?
Move for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on item number seventeen. Further discussion?
I just had a question. You don't think it'd be any congestion when you trying to back out? I mean, you know, you, they are slant parking, and if I'm coming out of the court, the assessors office, and I'm trying to get out, I know we got stop signs.
So, Larry, let me, let me take that one.
If you've been up there currently, counselor, you'll see that we have had stops at Fourth
and Broadway, and it's working very well.
Okay.
And keep in mind, the red light would hold them just as well.
Okay.
We really feel this is more efficient. Every time these lights go down and we end up putting stops up, it actually works better.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number seventeen passes. Item number eighteen.
Consider approval of a professional services retainer agreement between the city of Muskogee and Dr. Jeremy Ross to provide medical oversight to the city of Muskogee Fire Department pursuant to the requirements of Oklahoma Administrative Code three-ten, six forty-one dash three dash twenty-four for the sum of two thousand dollars per month.
Chief Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We recently looked into some of our normal processes and found a couple inefficiencies pertaining to the medical direction due to the distance that our employees actually have to travel to meet with our current medical director. So we feel for, to correct these inefficiencies, it would be much easier for us to, to obtain someone who is local. And also with the recently passed legislation by the state of Oklahoma, we feel it's the utmost importance to have a local doctor to provide medical direction for the Muskogee Fire Department in the event something is needed on a daily basis. We do recommend approval.
Thank you, Chief Moore. Do we have any conversation about item number eighteen?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number eighteen. Any further discussion? The only thing I would suggest to us, I've had this conversation with Mr. Miller, is that we notify the medical authority about decision, since they help fund this position. Any other further discussion? Roll call.
Perlin Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number eighteen passes. Item number nineteen.
Consider approval of city council policy one dash twelve, sales tax rebate for locally owned retail businesses, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Garvin.
Mayor, members of the council, this item is for approval of a sales tax rebate for a locally owned business. First of all, the city is authorized under the laws of the state of Oklahoma to entice economic development through the use of a sales tax rebate. The development has to have, excuse me, the development has to produce sales tax, create jobs, or generally improve the economic, uh, economy of the city of Muskogee. Now, in the past, we've only used sales tax for new business coming into the city of Muskogee. Typically, they've been multimillion dollar investments made. So we're trying to revise or put together a policy to allow locally owned restaurants or retail developments, sales tax producing businesses, to make application for a sales tax rebate. So we put together a policy with procedures. It starts out with the definition of a locally owned business. It's the same definition that we have in the economic development fund ordinance. So I'm not going to repeat that. The sales tax period shall be for ten years. The business shall collect and pay sales tax to the city of Muskogee as per the Oklahoma Tax Commission. Again, it's a sales tax rebate, so you have to pay sales tax in order to get the rebate. The minimum total capital investment by the locally owned business applicant shall be five hundred thousand. The rebate shall not exceed ten percent of the total capital investment for the term specified, and that will be determined on a case-by-case basis. The rebate will be based upon the total retail taxable sales generated, and the rebate will be fifty percent of the two percent of collected city imposed sales tax. Currently, the city collects four percent in sales tax. Two percent is earmarked, which re leaves two percent. So it'll be fifty percent of that two percent. That is equivalent to a quarter for every dollar of sales tax collected. A sales tax base shall be established upon the, the average sales tax collected over the prior twelve months. If it's an existing business, we're currently collecting that sales tax. We want to establish a base, and the rebate will be from monies that are collected once it reaches, it exceeds that base. No rebate shall be due or paid until a certificate of occupancy is issued and the business has been open to the public for a minimum of twelve months. The rebate shall consist of the prior twelve months of collected actual, not the estimated, sales tax and be payable in one lump sum, once a year, depending on the term of the, of the agreement, whether it's a one-year term or a ten-year term. If the business has received an incentive in the past, they would not qualify for the sales tax rebate, nor shall a business participate in more than one incentive. In other words, if they, they can make application to the economic development fund, they can make application for a sales tax rebate. They can't receive funding from both of those programs. The city council shall consider these factors prior to approving any sales tax rebate, and it's the number of jobs that are being retained by an existing business, the number of jobs created by a business that is expanding. If it's a new business, the number of jobs created by that new business. We'll also look at the salaries for each of those, the existing salaries, the salaries from the expansion, the salaries from the new job. I also want to know the current annual taxable sales generated by the existing business. If it's a new business, we want to know the new or the estimated sales for that business on an annual basis. We want to know what the total capital investment is by the business. There's some other factors that you may want to include, like the, what the development cost, and that'd be including city staff, labor cost, what it'll cost to put that together. If it's a new business, you probably want to also look at any impact to city services, like will there be additional cost for fire and police? What have you impact on our streets? Will it cause a burden on our stormwater system? Those need to be looked at, but it's typically if it's a, a new locally owned business. It would require two-thirds majority vote, which would be six members of the city council to approve extending funds from, for a sales tax rebate. I put in there as an effective date on the policy as February the first, twenty-twenty-three. Glad to answer any questions.
We have one resident signed to speak to us tonight, Mr. Kenny Greer. You'll come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Kenny Greer. Live at twenty-six oh three Galahad. Let me say again, I have no problem with Olive Garden coming to Muskogee. It is how you paid them and created an unfair competitive edge for them. My city is essentially in restaurant business against me for the next ten years. Right after coming out of COVID, currently fighting inflation and dealing with a labor shortage due to our government paying people to stay home. Again, there has not been a great increase in population, nor has there been a new manufacturing or industry that has created new disposable income in Muskogee. I came to visit the council on November twenty-first and the twenty-eighth. I stated that I believe, what I believe to be facts as to what you were doing regarding paying people from out of town to come to Muskogee to compete with locals that did the very same thing, and they did it all on their own. I asked each of you to contact me and tell me what you saw in your actions that I was unable to see. Mayor Coleman told me from the bench he would get with me that week. He never did, but did send a text five days later saying he was going to have Gary work on something for locals. Not one council person from my ward, from which my restaurant resides, nor where I live, reached out to me to talk to me regarding what I believe to be an unfair incentive. I don't know how to interpret that other than it is irrelevant to you, or you are wrong and don't have any way to refute what I said. I have had feedback through other people in which I have heard that council people have stated that everybody is doing this. If so, I would like to know which council person told you everybody was doing this, and I would like to know who told you this falsehood. I would like to know which municipalities are paying retail to come and compete in their town with locals. Municipalities that do that with no new money in their local economy are essentially just pie slicers. I have also heard that this creates growth. I hope you are not fooled by that statement, as this does not create go, growth. Colton's did not come to Muskogee, it came to Walmart. Chick-fil-A and Panda did not come to Muskogee because of Col, because Colton's built across the street. They came because the traffic count and the drawl of Walmart. Quick Trip did not come to Muskogee, they came to sixty-nine highway because of the traffic count. If they came to Muskogee, they would be on every street corner like KC is. Olive Garden came to Highway sixty-nine, high traffic count, and it's going to serve the many hotels that are adjacent to it, along with locals that used to trade elsewhere. We, the people of Muskogee, are giving Olive Garden an average of thirty-five thousand dollars a year back for the next ten years. I have read the ordinance, a proposal associated with compensation for loans. I believe it to be nothing but a bunch of smoke and mirrors to be able to say we've done something for locals. You are asking locals to do more than what they are currently doing, yet you are going to pay Olive Garden for what we have already done? In this new article, you said you were going to take into consideration estimated transfer losses from existing merchants, merchants? I do not believe the same consideration was taking, was taken when you were doing the sales tax rebate agreement with Olive Garden and how it would affect locals. You make my argument for me. I hear about money leaving and going to Tulsa for people to eat out and shop. However, you have given eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars to Quick Trip from Tulsa, you've given seven hundred fifty thousand to Colton's from Arkansas, you're giving three hundred fifty thousand to Olive Garden out of Florida, you gave Vector Properties four point six million out of Tulsa, and then you're giving an out-of-town home builder six hundred thousand to build homes. Do you think these profits from these businesses circulating in our local, circulating in our local economy? It seems our city is worried about the citizens spending their money where they're doing it, but the city isn't worried about where they're spending our money and where the profits are going because they're not ending up in Muskogee. I would ask each and every one of you to vote no, which you already voted on thirteen, and this is nineteen, revise it, and if you do something for someone out of town, you should be able to do the exact same thing for a local who built here because they raised their families here, were born here, and they've been a part of this community their entire life. Better yet, don't do any incentives, including the one point one million combined that you're going to give to Olive Garden and Colton's, and put it towards creating manufacturing and industry that would create disposable income, and almost everything that you've given money to would come here to get the extra disposable income instead of having to pay them. I've also heard that this helps lure industry to our town when executives come here and are scouting potential, potential locations, that they see these national chains.
Mr. Greer, I hate to interrupt you. Your time's up, but I will give you thirty seconds if that's okay to close your.
Mayor, I appreciate that very much. These national chains, it has potential to help them locate here. If that were the case, don't you think Pryor would have a Colton's, and Pryor would have If that were the case, don't you think Pryor would have a Coltons and Pryor would have an Olive Garden because their industry is booming? Again, I ask you to vote no. I ask you to stop the incentives, the frivolous spending and create some meaningful jobs that will help all retail. I don't want money from you, but I don't want you to create an unfair playing field and until we have more disposable income, our hospitality industry, Mayor, we run on a profit margin, a, a margin of, of, of that. And we're in the worst possible times and you're propping somebody up against us. I'm asking you to stop it. I asked you in 18, we're doing it again. If this is your definition of growth, I honestly believe this may very well be part of Muskogee's problem. You ever heard of Sussman's? You ever heard of S&amp;Q Clothers? You ever heard of Ketchum Lumber? You ever heard of Lane Pierce Lumber? Those were all locals. They're gone because our city got in bed with somebody to build a mall and ruin our downtown. Do we want locals here? Do we want to run them out of town? I, I thank you all. I appreciate your time. I thank you for what you do when you sit up there. You make hard decisions, but talk to your constituents. That's all I want to do. I just want to talk to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have any questions for Mr. Greer? Thank you. We've had the presentation by Mr. Garvin. What is the pleasure of the body? On item number 19.
Move for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on number 19. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
No.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Upstaying.
Jamie Stout.
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Passes.
The item passes. Item number 20.
Consider approval of an amendment to city council policy 7-1, purchasing manual, revising section one to increase purchasing thresholds at the listed approval levels, revising section two to add use of P-cards as an acceptable form of procuring goods and services or take other necessary action.
Benita.
Yes.
What's your last name, Benita?
Fatima.
Ms. Fatima.
Yes.
I'm not going to say Ms. Fatima. Please proceed.
Okay, so we actually had revised our threshold of the $1,000 to, wait, is it $2,000 to $5,000? We actually wanted to update our purchasing policy as well, going from, which requires three quotes from the 1,000 to 5,000 and then the 24, 999 to 50,000, which is the city manager approval and then city council approval of 50,001, if that's what I'm saying. Yes, sorry. Forgot about that. So do you have any questions or?
Let me ask the council, do you have any questions? This is the same information we've represented as an informal conversation piece that we're now ready to take action on one way or the other. Do we have any questions? Ms. Fatima.
I just have, I just want to make sure that we don't do split payments. I mean.
That's in our purchasing manual.
Okay.
And it's also within our guidelines that we don't do stringing or splitting.
Okay.
So that is with state law.
I mean, I just have to stress that part.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on item number 20. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 20 passes. Item number 21.
Consider approval of the appointment of CB Able to the airport board to serve a four-year term beginning February 1, 2023 and ending March 31, 2027, filling the expired term of Monte Wapaha or take other necessary action.
Mr. Hous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my item. I'm proud to recommend CB Able to the airport board. He is a pilot, he's also Cleet certified, been in our community for a long time and he will provide good insight to the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 21. Any discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 21 passes. Item number 22.
Consider approval of the appointment of Tim Hollyfield to the city facilities board to serve a five-year term beginning February 1, 2023 and ending January 31, 2028 or take other necessary action.
Mr. Hous.
Again, thank you. This is my item. I'm honored to make the nomination for Tim Hollyfield to the city's facilities board. His expertise in HVAC could come in, great use to that.
My second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 22. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 22 passes. Item number 23.
Consider approval of the appointment of councillor Pearl Ann Boyati Craig to the Eastern Oklahoma Development District Board to fill the unexpired term of former councillor Ivory Van beginning February 1, 2023 and expiring on June 30, 2025 or take other necessary action.
Members of the council, this is my recommendation. Councillor Van had served that board faithfully. Ms. Boyati Craig had expressed an interest in replacing him and I'm happy to do that at this time and that would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 23. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 23 passes. Item number 24.
Consider approval of the appointment of John Tyler Hammons as the at-large commissioner to the Urban Renewal Authority, replacing Bob Coburn, to serve a term commencing upon appointment and expiring August 31, 2023 or take other necessary action.
Members of the council, this is my recommendation, I believe is the final one to this, Urban Renewal Authority, and that would be my motion for Mr. Hammons to serve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 24. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 24 passes. Item number 25.
Consider approval of the appointment of James Gully to the War Memorial Trust Authority to serve a three-year term, filling the expired term of Andy Simmons, beginning February 1, 2023 and ending January 31, 2027 or take other necessary action.
Members of the council, this is my recommendation for James Gully to serve on this trust. He has expressed an interest and is eager to serve and that would be my recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 25. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number 25 passes. We will now go to the public comment section of tonight's meeting.
Tonight, we will recognize those citizens who have signed up to speak. We have one citizen who signed up that we will recognize at this time. We'll call to the stand, Marlon J. Coleman. If you could give us your name and address and you will have three minutes to address
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Reed, Marlon Coleman, 500 West Broadway Street, Muskogee, Oklahoma. Let me take this opportunity to thank all of you who are watching on tonight, whether it's live or through the rebroadcast, those taxpayers, citizens and community organizations. I want to personally express my personal thanks to all of you for the prayers expressed for myself and my mother over the last several months. My mother was diagnosed with an advancing form of Alzheimer's at the same time where it was undetermined as to whether or not I had thyroid cancer. Today, I stand before this body healthy, healed, happy, ready to continue the work that I was elected to do in 2022 and if it's the Lord's will, looking forward to serving for years to come. Let me take this opportunity to thank the Muskogee City Council for their patience in allowing me to be the best mayor that I know how to be. In preparing for bowling events at bowling alleys, sometimes there's a term used by those in charge of preparing the bowling alley and that term is all balls on the racks. In the course of managing the city, good, bad or indifferent, those of us elected must have the mentality that when it comes to making tough decisions, we stand ready to lead with all balls on the racks. The next several months for us as a council will be critical in terms of maintaining voter confidence. We have to be sure none of our progress is overshadowed by bureaucratic dissidents provoked by the perception that we are afraid to lead. Progress is happening with industrial job expansions, street repairs, new home construction and an accelerated boost in retail development. Companies have decided that they want to live, work and play in Muskogee and we are obligated to be certain that those opportunities exist for our residents and companies alike. I will be making several recommendations over the next several months to this council that may or may not be popular for those seeking reelection, but as I have said, when it comes to making decisions that are in the best of the city of Muskogee, to councillor Van's credit, who helped make both of us famous, I don't give a hot chocolate about getting reelected, but I do give a hot chocolate about the people of Muskogee. I have the highest amount of confidence that most, if not all, members of this council